Mr. Chairman, I would like to welcome you to the Monday August 18th meeting. I might apologize, Sheriff.
McCoy has fell ill and had to go home, so we will proceed on. At this time, I would like to ask Commissioner McCoy if she'll lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance presentation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father, we come before you this evening and saying thanks to you. Thank you for another day. Thank you for all the blessings that you have stored upon us, and thank you for your mercy and your grace, because we all need it. Now, Lord, I ask that you give us the knowledge, the wisdom, and the patience, patience too, make the right decision for this county as well as for the people of Harney County. This is my prayer in your name, amen.
Amen. All right, are there any additions or deletions to the published agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we accept the amended agenda, including the Alliance Health Contract under item ten or under item ten F.
Second. Motion had been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, Madam Clerk. Item number four, the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent agenda is presented.
Second.
Motion had been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, Madam Clerk. All right, item number five is the public comment period. You get three minutes, not a total more than thirty minutes. There will be no profanity or personal insults tolerated. The first person who has signed up is Mr. Larry Mitchell.
Good evening, Commissioners, County Manager. My name's Larry Mitchell. I live at four seven eight Century Drive in Cameron, Lexington Plantation, which is full of active duty and retired veterans. Harney County is a beautiful county, and I'd like to start to say happy birthday, Harney County. The seal in front of us on February seventh, eighteen fifty-five, Harney County became an entity, and it was formed from Cumberland County. The flag was duly adopted on the seventeenth of February nineteen eighty-six, and I request that this body look into having the flag in this room and in front of our luxurious building. We need to have the public see the Harney County flag. What I'm here for today is to talk about the veterans, and downstairs by the Veterans Service Office, right down the stairs, is a wall of heroes. And I've talked to Director Eric Truesdale about my request. I'd like to make it a tradition, on the last public commissioners' meeting, twelve times a year, that we read the citation of our heroes downstairs. What I found out, they're about three minutes long, so I'd like to have this as a separate agenda from the comment period, and it's just one time a month, one hero that we read their citation. We have veterans and citizens that would like to volunteer to read their citation, and we'd have them displayed on the monitor, but there is not enough veteran days, memorial days in the year, to talk about our heroes of our county. So I'd like you to consider it, to make it a tradition, to read these citations. I also talked to Sheriff Coates. We have deputies in the fire department that died in the line of duty. I'd like to also include their citation readings, if possible. So we're going to work on this. We have a list of veterans that like to read the citations, and I'd like you to consider it to be read to the public here in this forum, as the people watch on YouTube and they can hear our county residents. So happy birthday, Harney County. It's a beautiful county, and we have a lot of veterans and a lot of volunteers that do many tasks for our county. So I appreciate everything you do, and all the employees in every department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Ms. Ann Taylor?
Hello, my name is Ann Taylor, and I live in Dunn. And I was looking at the agenda, and I want to find out more about the discussion and memorandum of understanding between the Board of Elections and the Board of Commissioners. When I looked at that, well, there's nothing more vital in our democracy than fair voting, and free and fair, and everybody that's entitled to vote, that wants to vote, should be able to vote. I don't know what this is about. I know that the Board of Elections is an independent agency, and it's under the State Board of Elections, which is an independent agency, and I don't understand where the county comes into that. I've worked elections for, since two thousand and eight, and I've worked just about every election, midterms, primaries, everything, and I've had a really, I like to brag about our system, because I've watched what Claire does and how things are done, and I've worked in the Dunn elections, and I've been in Lewis Creek, and Coates, and Andrew, and Lillington, and Irwin. Our election system is so good, and it's done so methodically and correctly, because every vote, every ballot that goes into that, into that room is counted, every vote is counted, every ballot that is left over is counted, and then there's always a few that get spoiled. Those are accounted for. Every one of them is accounted for. The machine doesn't count, the people working do count, they're calling the counts of the number of votes in every couple of hours to the Lillington office. It's just such a good system. I, you know, I'm not a good cheater, so I wouldn't know how to cheat, but I don't see how there could be much wrong with that. And so, you know, I just want to speak to them, and what a good job they do, and it's like, if it ain't fixed, I mean, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. So I don't know what the purpose of it is. And it kind of worried me, because these days, there's a lot of people trying to manipulate ways to change elections, and put it under different people, or get politics into it. And, you know, whatever party you're in, you know, elections should be fair for everybody, because what's right's right, what's wrong's wrong, and I just don't know what that's about.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, Mr. Rivas.
Yeah, my name is Jerry Rivas. It's very concerning to me that the public comment period has reverted back to thirty minutes, three minutes apiece. It took a long time for us to get it extended to five minutes, and a one-hour period. Letting twenty people speak a month is less than point zero 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 one percent of the population. But, you know, I watched the last meeting online, and on item C of your, how to conduct the public comment period, it says that, well, I'll get to the bottom of it, there've been times where I have went off on Commissioner Jaggers, he never responded. I have gone off on Commissioner Matthews, he never responded. I've had mean things to say to Barbara McCoy, she never responded. But you don't have the decency to sit up there and keep your mouth shut when Alan Longman speaks. It doesn't matter if you can understand a word he says. That's beside the point. He has the right to his freedom of speech, and the right to redress grievances with his government, and you making the motion to kick this back to three minutes is just a cheap attempt to absolve those rights. That's all that is. You know, I guess it goes back to when you were a police chief, and you hid behind your gun and your badge, and you demanded people shut their mouth. You're grinning now. You show that you have nothing but disdain and contempt for the taxpayers, unless it greases your skits. You ought to be ashamed of yourself, and you commissioners who went along with his scheme, it was just about a year ago that you voted to extend the period to an hour. Why would you go along and back it up? And it seems to me that there's three, I don't know where Matt Nicol is, I talked to him on the phone this morning, one of you ought to have the testicular, if not intestinal fortitude, to put it back to one hour and five minutes. And if you don't like what Alan Longman has to say, oh, well, he does have a point. Some days, the water tastes like crap, and it stains my shower stall orange. It's just sad. It really is sad that you put these rules up on the door, and you don't even follow them yourself. You're a cheap hypocrite. That's all you are, is a cheap hypocrite. You ought to be ashamed of yourself, sitting there with that stupid grin. Idiot.
All right, Mr. Chase Seals.
You know where I live at? After being in law enforcement for years with six different chiefs, I'm still very concerned about the stupid chases in this county for low-level cases. Two Saturdays ago, my son was in a thousand-foot of the wreck that happened just past Coach's Irwin School, Highway fifty-five. I asked him how he felt when he was trying to get out of the way. He said, "I couldn't hardly do nothing, they was coming so fast." They wrecked another county vehicle, a gray Crown vehicle, probably worth about a thousand dollars, but it's probably worth a lot less now. But I just hope that nobody's family has to suffer like the Knoxes and Finch's family have, because of low-level chases, nobody was hurt when they started. When I was attempting to bank robbery, other was some speeding back in twenty twenty-three. But after speaking to the sheriff, he's consistent on...
Hold on, Mr. Seals. Ma'am, ma'am, we can hear you up here. Thank you.
Being, being consistent on doing these chases, after speaking with Sheriff Coates, which I've been knowing since the seventy-eight, when his daddy ran for sheriff, trying to get some sense in the, these low-level chases, and not do them around these neighborhoods and big intersections, but wherever it's at, somebody's family's going to lose again, and the county's going to have to pay. Why can't we do better at these chases? Because nobody in here deserves to lose their family to any chase, for whatever reason, and I don't even know a lot of y'all in here. But the thing is, when you've done law enforcement, and my first chief used to tell me, this ain't Starsky and Hutch, this is real-life stuff. None of the deputies need to lose their life because of somebody who's already been in the system many times that he wants to run. That's what your radios are for. This is nineteen eighty-seven train, I was twenty-two back then, I'll be sixty-two in February. For forty years, I've listened to stupid chases. I've seen some police cars wanting Irwin, put up on the roof for some stupid chases, and we made it out of it. But the thing is, why can't we have better understanding of when to put the one year out, year after, out quick, instead of chasing them for miles and miles? In the Finch case, I know the family's still devastated about losing their two relatives front of food line in twenty-two thousand and four, but just to hear it and see it continue, and now it's got within a thousand foot of my youngest son, he's twenty-two, makes you really understand that the sheriff don't get it. These low-level chases are not necessary, and the sheriff said the county commissioner can't tell him what to do. Well, the money comes through the county commissioners. Somebody needs to do a better job, and encouraging him to stop these stupid chases, and the highway patrol too, because we don't need to get run over with this mess. You know, y'all take care. I'll be back again, I'm sure.
Thank you, Mr. Seals. Ms. Kelly McCray, is that right?
Good evening, Kelly McCray, two hundred, East Ivy Street, Lillington. Thank you for approving the bookmobile money. It's a great service to people that live out in the outer reaches of the county that do not have transportation. It's also, I think, great for our kids in the summer that have maybe have made great gains during the year of reading, that still can have access to books. Also, people that are single mothers, or single fathers, or adults looking after their parents... parents or any number of reasons, of people that cannot get out of their house to bring a little joy into their lives by being able to have a book. All my young adult, young childhood, we had the Bookmobile and it was a great thing. I'm glad you brought it back. Secondly, I would like to, if possible, some way get an update about the $500,000 grant that was awarded to the county for dealing with the Forever Chemicals and the pilot program. If you guys could give us a little update about where the timeframe is of that, of anything? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McCray. Ms. Brock.
Greetings, commissioners and staff. I'm addressing you all as smart, competent commissioners, not like what Jerry said, but ones who can understand problems that you have to deal with and come up with solutions, albeit probably some I don't agree with. However, I'm here today to call your attention to two things. And one is about the time for individual comment period being reduced. You reduced it from one hour to 30 minutes, from five minutes to three minutes. And since you've had 14 board meetings, 14 work sessions, two special sessions, and you've presided over three major issues, the fluoride issue, the joint resolution issue, and the budget. You've heard 95 people speak in that time. So that's about seven people per meeting. So about 35 minutes. I heard that you were tired of people criticizing you and talking to you, but isn't that what elected officials are here for? That you have to hear people's opinions, no matter what they, what they are? I respectfully ask that you revert back to the hour and five minutes so that our, your constituents can speak. Also, I have a comment about the 259 votes that you've taken thus far up until July 21st. 259 of them have been unanimous. 259, 253 out of 259 votes. How does that happen? I believe discussions are being had outside of these meetings. Directions are being made and discussions on how to vote. Because these discussions should be done here in this meeting. Because when 98% of the votes taken are unanimous, what's going on? How, how does a local governing authority come up with 98% unanimous votes? So as elected, smart individuals, I encourage you to discuss more in these meetings and less behind the scenes so that we know how you think, what your concerns are. And I'm hoping that in this next agenda point, that you will be discussing this thoroughly. Thank you.
Okay, this time that closes our public comment period. And will ma'am-
Don't we speak, Catherine?
Yeah, the floor is yours, ma'am.
Ms. Brock, I want to say to you and all the other members here in this chamber, I'm all for free speech because for too many years of my life, I was saddled because of the law. But I don't think it's right for anybody to come up here cursing me, cursing me, and before we even take a vote. Now, I'm not above having an hour, but let us all be like adults. I can disagree with you and still think highly of you as a citizen. I don't make enough money to sit up here on this stand to be cussed out and called names. So I'm not, I'm not against changing it back. The only reason I voted for it because I asked the chairman at the time, can we change, can we change it back?
Change it back?
So, well, that's up to the whole board, not me.
I understand.
Okay? I just want to let you know, we have been brutalized and cussed out and cussed about issues. I'm only here for the people. So I'm sorry I had to say that.
No, thank you.
I'm just, I'm just saying what I feel. I can discuss anything with you, but don't start cussing me and calling me names.
Mr. Chairman, two things. I would like for the, Mr. Brent to come, if he could, either he or someone get a, come back and present to us what Mr. Mitchell talked about, the veteran citations reading. I think that is a great idea. If he could, at the next meeting, if you could, you know, it's a work session anyway, if we could talk about how that would be and what could do about it. And also, I agree with the county flag. I mean, it is our county and we should have it displayed for sure. And along what Ms. Barber's saying, I have no problem with anybody talking to me about anything that's going on in there, in this county or anything. But I agree with the way you presented that, Ms. Barber. But feel free at any time, my number's on the site, call me. I'll be glad to talk to you over the phone. It doesn't matter what party you're affiliated with, I will talk to you about whatever the issues are. Thank you.
If, Rodney, if I recognize you, I got to recognize everybody else, or we've got to move on.
Well, I was trying to talk on the podium. Yeah, I went to the media, I'll give my three minutes.
Okay, did you come in late? The reason I wanted to say this, I didn't see your name on the list.
Yeah, no, I didn't. I got it.
Does the board have an objection to Mr. Rodney coming to the-
They ain't about the three minutes, it's the vote or something else.
Three minutes.
I got you. Hello, everybody, good night.
I come in front of you guys to, I come in front of you guys to talk about Motive Care. Some of us know about it, some of us don't. Harnett County, you need to know about it. Motive Care is a-
We, I mean, we can't hear you if you turn the microphone away.
I thought that was not enough. Motive Care is a brokering company that's from out of California. They're picking up our citizens with fly-by-night companies and the service that we used to get in from the medical transportation is lowered even more. I have pictures and proof emails of customers not happy about the service. Motive Care is not free. Motive Care has taken a percentage of our money from DHHS, as Brent Trout, you know, because when Jim Bergen came into the office mad about this picture with a citizen sitting on the floor of a vehicle, he said he didn't want him in his county. And you sat up there last week nodding your head with-
Mr. Rodney, if you would address the board and not-
Oh, well, I got, he's part of the board. So when he sat up there not acting like he didn't know about these pictures, this is a citizen sitting on the floor of a vehicle. I have other pictures and statements of people being sexually harassed, touched, and everything else. Our assurances for the companies that do do it right are through the roof. Our assurance covers Motive Care and our vehicles. When I worked with Harnett County, it was never that way. I got some other things I can show you here, if you allow me to pass it forward.
Here, spring forth.
Okay. The second thing I wanted to talk about was when, I guess the head of hearts, Vary Blevins, was talking about DOT and all the 28 vehicles that he has received from DOT. The funds come from the federal government that goes down to the state. In regards of you getting these vehicles, it's a contract through DOT that says good faith certification. And this good faith certification, it states right here that you're supposed to honor it by working with DBE Company. Here's a certificate right here in the state stamp. At the bottom of it, it has Jim Bergen, 2012. This is what's been going on for years. Now I come back for a contract, the county commissioners are saying yeah, but the county manager is saying no. Why?
Okay, thank you, sir.
Oh, here's the paperwork so you can see it and read it.
Just talk with Mr. Jaggers down there. Okay, item number six is discuss a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Elections and the Board of Commissioners and changes to personnel orders.
Good evening, commissioners. Mr. Appel came to you all, I guess, last week to discuss the MOU that's in place between Harnett County and the Board of Elections with regards to the county providing HR and personnel services through this MOU in a contracted capacity. Board of Elections has recently voted to amend that MOU so that instead of having their employees be bound by the disciplinary policy that the state or that the county has adopted and implements for its employees through this contracted service, they would like to take that portion of the MOU out. So currently, where we have the county personnel ordinance and all the county employees are bound by it, with entities that are independent, such as Board of Elections, they could choose which portions they would like to be bound by if they choose to engage us for personnel services. They have asked to keep themselves exempt from the grievance process and they would now like to go ahead and exempt themselves from the disciplinary process while keeping county HR to utilize for benefits, any, you know, the rest of the personnel ordinance with regards to pay, time, benefits, et cetera. So what's being brought to you tonight is the revised MOU, which has, which was approved by the Board of Elections at their last meeting, and it's brought to you tonight to be considered and voted on for the changes.
Let me ask you this. If what I read earlier and what you're telling us, they would transfer to the same status as a deputy sheriff or deputy clerk?
That's correct. Currently, it would be Article 9 and Article 10 that they'd be exempt from. The other entities that are exempt from that are the sheriff's office and registered deeds, both two independent agencies similar to how Board of Elections operates.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Right, and it's in simple English to me. How can you discipline a person when you don't have the, nothing in writing to give you that right to discipline a person?
Well, ma'am, that's exactly why we have it codified in our personnel ordinance. That would be if, if they decide not to utilize the disciplinary process or grievance process that's codified in the personnel ordinance, they would be responsible for handling that however they see fit. And that, that would be up to the Board of Elections to decide how that is codified and how that is, is, you know, made known by their employees.
I'm not trying to be difficult, but isn't that the way it's supposed to be? Is that the way it has been?
That, that is currently the way it has been. Board of Elections has asked that they remove that portion from the ordinance or from the MOU. So they would be responsible for coming up with their own process, not only for grievances, but also discipline.
So if I understand what you're saying-
I understand.
The, the Board of Elections could simply say for incident A, it'd say this is not a major thing, we're going to elect to give a verbal counseling over this. And then incident B be much more severe, we're going to do a written reprimand over this. And incident C, not saying you've got to have all three of them, but just to, is much more severe and we're going to terminate the employee. But the bottom line is it's solely in their discretion as a, as a board that supervises that division.
That is correct.
I have one quick. The way I understand your, and what was said the last time, we don't, we can't dictate a MOU to the Board of Elections. They asked for us to agree to one that they presented to us. So if they don't want this MOU anymore, read the same way that it was before the changes were made, that's totally on them to, we don't have the authority to tell them, hey, this is the way you're going to change the MOU.
That, that's correct, Commissioner. All we're doing is providing a service and it's the service that they want. That's, that's all.
So this is what they're asking for and we don't really have the authority to change it.
That's correct. I mean, based on, based on the vote that they gave last week, this is, the changes that are in this MOU, that's what they're requesting.
I got you. Okay.
I got it, but I don't see that it's any change because that's the way it's always been. We don't have no authority over them, over the employees at the Board of Elections. I totally don't understand the change. And I'm sorry, I'm not trying to put you on the spot or anything, but I'm just saying I don't understand why we changing the MOU.
So, so you're correct. We don't have the authority over their employees and we, and we never have.
Nobody, not even the director.
That, that's correct.
But the board.
It, it lies with the Board of Elections. What this MOU did originally was they contracted to have our HR perform those services on their behalf.
Oh, now I got you.
What we're changing now is they're saying, we still want you to provide services on our behalf. We don't want you to provide services as it relates to discipline and we don't want you to provide services as it relates to grievances. We, we will handle that as a board independently.
But for a point of clarity here, they will still have the same benefits, same pay schedule, everything they've always had as far as retirement and healthcare and those types of things.
That's correct. All the, all the services that are managed by HR, it, it's going to continue with the exception of those two items.
Well, I think they, they're the ones who tell us what they want the MOU and we just agree to it. I mean, that's pretty much the way it is. Right?
That's correct.
We're acknowledging by our vote, we're acknowledging that they're going to handle this themselves and it's their responsibility.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay, thank you, sir. All right, is there any other questions for staff? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And the second part of that was changes coming to the personnel ordinance. So there will be two changes that I will present, and the first is in Article 1, the organization of the personnel system. It's going to be section 2, the coverage item E. I'm going to change that to state, it'll say, the change will state Board of Election employees who are, however, subject to the following, and all of those articles will remain the same. And then the next change will be further down, actually on the next page, where it says this policy will cover all Harnett County employees, however, we will change that to state the Board of Election employees are exempt from Article 9 and Article 10. So it will match the changes in the MOU. But I'll present the redline copy of the personnel ordinance with the changes and a clean copy of the next work session.
Okay. Pleasure, board.
Do we need to take action on this to?
If I'm hearing right, we can only take an action on what counsel presented because she's not got the redline copy ready for the record.
Okay.
So we would have to make, is that right?
That, that is correct. It's just on the MOU. The changes that are required that come out of the MOU, that will be presented at the next work session.
What she just described-
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. But the MOU is the only thing that's being considered.
Mr. Chairman, being that the Board of Elections has presented this MOU in the form today and presented it, and they're the ones who, according to law, dictate that, I would make a motion, we agree to the MOU and accept it as the MOU with them.
Sir, second.
I second it because to me, I don't see any change.
Motion have been- Sorry, motion have been made and properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have. Ms. Taylor, if you would like to discuss it further, Thomas will be available.
I, I understand it now.
Okay.
I didn't before. This clarified it.
Okay, well, goodness, he, he's available if you wanted to. And Thomas, you, are you still a member of the bar here or used to be here?
Yeah, uh-uh. I'm still, I'm still licensed.
Okay, goodness, I just wanted to know who he was talking to.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, the, we'll move on to item number seven, the Sand Hills Antique Farm Equipment Club Annual Report. Here comes Alvin McCarty, again.
I'm going to lighten this thing up a little bit.
Yeah?
It's kind of, it's kind of getting hard here. I'm Alvin McCarty. Here representing Sand Hills Antique Farm Equipment Club, which we had a birthday last Sunday, 25 years old. So our club is now 25 years old. I'm Alvin McCarty, here to represent Sand Hills Antique Farm Equipment Club to give our annual report as agreed to when we formed our club. as agreed to when we formed our club, our contract with Harnett County to be a part of Harnett County Park System in 2008. As you can see, we are very busy club. So we've been busy. We do the report every August and that's our anniversary. So therefore from October 24 to present date is what I'm covering here. In October 24, we did our Ag Science Days for Harnett County 5th graders, for schools attending in the fall, representing half of the 5th grade schools, leaving things, learning things about farm life on the farm in both past and present. Around 300 children each day attend these classes. After Ag Science Days, we had our Fall O-Tomy Farm Days, two days, which is on a Friday and Saturday. Look on the screen up there, you'll see some of the events that's taking place with this club. The people that come to our club can observe demonstrations of different machines running for different jobs. Many vendors attend selling and buying and trading things. So it's more of a swap meet in the fall than it is a show, but we do show too. It's a combination. After all, we are educational, educational club. We do other things too. We go to Raleigh to Got To Be North Carolina. We do demonstrations with them. We've done that forever since they've been doing the show in Raleigh. We do Classic Powers in Benson. We do Progress Energy and Carthage. And other civic organizations we support with churches and so forth, doing hayrides and things like that. So in March 2025, we repeated our Ag Science Days again, the other half of the, of our schools. This is doing, by doing four days a year, we can cover all the 5th graders in Harnett County, including homeschool children. Also, other things the park is used for is the sheriff's department uses the club to park, to train some dogs for their purpose of sheriffing. Also, the fire departments are doing some training. Also conservation programs for the conservation people here in the county. Again, thank you for your support. We appreciate the support of the county commissioners. I've been doing this, I think this is 16 or 17 times I've been before this mic. So I can't get anybody else to stand up here. So again, thank you so much for the support of the county commissioners. Your support is very, very important for the past 17 years. We are working progress, of course, and thank you again and may God bless you all.
Thank you.
Well, we thank you. We thank you for the work you do because I like to go over there and just to look at those old machines, little tractors and all that. It's just amazing.
I told you I was going to lighten it up a little bit.
It really takes you back to the past.
Well, thank you so much. What y'all are doing is becoming a dying art. That's exactly right. Again, thank you on behalf of the board.
I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you to come up with one of the Ag Science Days in October.
I'll do you one better than that. Have you got a sawmill at it?
Yeah, we've got a sawmill, but we're not going to put it on Ag Science Day. I'll be on the code.
I started to say, because between me and Major Woods, we can come up with one if you didn't have.
We got some mowers you can saw.
All right. Number eight, a public hearing, a proposed zoning change from industrial to RA 30 in Neighborsborough Township on Brian McLamb Lane. I'll leave all the pin numbers and stuff for you.
Well, thank you Chair and other members of the board, Sarah Arbor, Harnett County Development Services. We have two cases coming before you for the public hearing tonight and our first one is a requested rezoning from the industrial to the RA 30 zoning district. The owner and applicant is Mr. John I.C. Stewart. The site can be described as a vacant and unimproved parcel, which is currently used for agricultural purposes. There is a stream in a small pond which are located on the northwest property line. Next, I'd like to provide a little bit of background about the property as well as the community. So zoning was adopted in this section of the county in 1988 and the parcel has presumably been zoned industrial since that time. But since that time zoning was adopted, there's not been any industrial development along Brian McLamb Lane. The properties along Brian McLamb have maintained their residential nature and have increasingly been used for residential purposes after several parcels were rezoned to the RA 30 zoning district in 2015. So next, I'd like to provide some information about the infrastructure available to the site. So currently there's, there's little infrastructure available. Public water and public sewer services are not available for the site. The road which serves the site is a private road. It does not have state maintenance. The road is paved with asphalt for a short distance before it narrows, transitions to a gravel and dirt surface with variations in width of compaction. So the current access is not sufficient for immediate industrial development or for further subdivision of this property. And I've provided some photos there for the board to review. So in terms of compatibility of the requested zoning district and the surrounding zoning districts, the map demonstrates that the requested zoning district is compatible and that's due to the adjacent and surrounding properties which are zoned RA 30. Additionally, the uses permitted within the RA 30 zoning districts are compatible with the surrounding land uses. The current land use classification, on the other hand, is incompatible. So if this rezoning is to be approved tonight, the motion would have to also change the underlying land use. So it would be required for the future land use classification to be amended to make it consistent with the requested zoning district RA 30 and staff is recommending that that be amended to rural residential.
Anything else for staff?
We've provided a few photos for, no, 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 that's okay. We've provided a few photos for your review. And I'll quickly move through our evaluation. Staff found that the request of rezoning is compatible with the adjacent zoning classification as well as the existing land uses. And as staff moved through our evaluation, we were able to answer everything else in the affirmative with the exception of consistency with the underlying land use, which staff is recommending to be changed to rural agricultural if this is approved. Staff is recommending approval as well as the planning board. And I'm here for any questions. Thank you very much.
Any questions, staff? Y'all may recall, this is the one I spoke up during the prep that this is a division of Ayers, their family farm they're dividing up.
So is that the reason why they want to change it to industrial?
From industrial.
From industrial to?
There's another generation of grandchildren that's come along down here that's got old enough to build a house.
So explain to me, are you changing it from industrial to rural?
To rural agricultural, RA 30 zoning district. Yes, ma'am.
So if it's rural agriculture, they still can do whatever they want to as far as farming, right?
Right. That would still permit, that would still permit agricultural uses on the property. Yes, ma'am.
I just want to know what I'm voting for because I'm telling you, what that gentleman said there, ten years from now, we don't know where our food is going to be coming from. Because all the farmers are getting out of their business and I don't blame them because it's hard to make it in farming now. Whatever the board wants to start.
Well, at this time, if there's no more questions for staff, is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak for this issue? Come forward to the podium, identify yourself and where you're from, sir.
Here's my grandmother's and grandfather's little place back there. I've lived back there since 56 and I just got cancer a year and a half ago and Eddie, my friend, wants to buy it and have a house and some horses back there. And there's only about five acres of good land. The rest of it's erosion. It's always been, Gil and Clam next door has always farmed it. But I was just trying to just take some responsibility off me, get rid of it. I just don't need it. So that's the reason I was doing it.
Anybody like to speak against this issue? Hearing none, at this time we come out of a public hearing. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve the zoning change and change the, change it to RA 30.
The motion have been made properly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Do we need to include the amendment that she was asking for, Sarah?
Yes, thank you. In your motion, you would also need to make the amendment that this is going to amend the future land use classification to rural agricultural or, excuse me, rural residential.
I would make my amendment to my motion to include changing it to rural residential agricultural.
You have a minute or second. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, Madam Clerk. All right, item number nine, we're going to a public hearing in reference to, looks like 9585045613 from RA 20 to commercial. It's on Highway 87. Go ahead, Sarah.
Thank you. Yes, so the property is approximately 3.5 acres located in the barbecue township on NC 87 South in Cameron. So the site consists of two wooded, unimproved parcels which do have overhead power lines that run across the site's midsection. The adjacent land uses consist of vacant wooded land and single family homes. There are commercial land uses including a fitness center, gas station, automobile repair shop and several restaurants which are located in close proximity to the north of the subject properties. In terms of services available for the site, there is public water. It is unknown at this time if sewer is going to be available for the site. It may rely on a private subject tank. So the property does have access to NC 87 South. There are approximately 31,500 daily trips along the section of NC 87. Next, we'll review the zoning district compatibility map. So there are several parcels located to the south which are already zoned commercial as well as some parcels located to the north which also have a commercial zoning district. Next, the property is also located within two of the overlay districts. One is the highway corridor overlay district, which encourages commercial and non-residential development and promotes safe traffic patterns with shared access and lateral access. The other is military corridor overlay district. The main purpose of this district is to ensure that the, there's compatibility between air and exercise operations associated with the local military installations and the land uses. So as a part of our evaluation, staff did send the application to the Fort Bragg Regional Land Use Advisory Commission and they did respond to us to let us know that a change of zoning to commercial would increase the compatibility with the military aviation operations. The land use classification compatibility map has been provided here and as you can see, this is located in one of our new village districts, just created with the adoption of our updated land use plan. So these areas are meant to be nodes or activity centers for growing areas of the county and they do support commercial and non-residential development. I've provided several photos of the site for your viewing. And as staff moved through our evaluation, we were able to answer everything in the affirmative this time. Staff found that it was compatible with the surrounding land uses as well as the surrounding properties with the commercial zoning classification. We also found that it was consistent with the land use plan. We've outlined three goals that support the, this rezoning request. Goal number four is to encourage commercial recruitment, including retail and restaurants. That is to address leakage trends. Strategy 4A, which is to encourage commercial and retail development in non-residential and mixed use areas identified on the future land use map. And then strategy 4C is to encourage investment on potential commercial corridors that will serve as gateways to the county. And at our planning board meeting, the planning board devoted unanimously to approve this rezoning and there is nobody present to speak in opposition. Staff is open for any questions. Thank you.
Any more questions for staff? Well, thank you, sir. Is there anyone who would like to speak on behalf of this issue? Coming up behind you.
Good evening Commissioners. John Tucker with TFD, 141 Country Haven Lane. Appreciate your time this evening. Appreciate staff diligently reviewing the request. Really, she's much more eloquent at describing why we want to do this, mostly to bring it in line with the plans Commissioners have adopted and it's a good piece of property that really should be developed commercially and, you know, we would appreciate your support. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Couple of real quick questions. Bring the video back, picture back up, please. There's something caught my attention. Nothing. The one with the aerial photograph. Looks like the transmission line is running through the middle of it. If you've got enough room for, I'm not sure to check it, but.
There's a couple of things. There is a transmission line that runs through the center. Actually, I would not classify it as a transmission line. I think it would be classified as just regular power lines.
Distribution line. That's good.
And two properties north, they just built a fitness center that they didn't require the moving of those lines. If they needed to be relocated for commercial development, I don't think.
Your soils are good enough for a separate.
There are larger transmission lines just to the south of it. They may pass over the very corner of the property, but that's.
I was just curious more than anything else. You've done your soil work too?
A little bit. We're in the process of going through memos and reports and everything like that.
I was being more curious. Okay. Any more questions for this candidate? All right. Thanks, sir. Anyone else who'd like to speak on behalf of this issue? Come over.
Larry Mitchell. I live pretty close to this site and going to a commercial zoning is really needed and one thing when we talk about the budget, we need revenues. And if we go to the commercial, I just wish I knew what kind of business it would be, but businesses are needed down in around this area. Thank you.
Anyone who would like to speak against this issue? Hearing none, at this time we come out of public hearing. Is there a motion on the floor?
Motion to approve zoning change as requested.
Motion have been made properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, Madam Clerk. Item number 10, the county managers' report and item A is the Harnett County Health Department Health Monthly Report.
So yes, we provided the reports on A, B and some budget revisions that were done in C. I have a Um, I have a few other items to remind the board about. Um, the community meeting day is next week, August 28th, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m. here at the RCL. We'll have a number of resources, uh, county departments, local depart, local, uh, organizations that'll be here. There'll be food trucks, uh, there will be a document shredding truck, um, children's activities, and much, much more. You can check our website and register if you would, if you're interested in coming. Um, want to mention that LeAnn Blackman in the Health Department will be receiving the Hometown Hero Award for Harnett County at the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference. Um, this is an award recognizing individuals within our county that do excellent work, and, uh, she was brought forward as a, as a recommendation. We had a number of recommendations, probably could have chosen just about any of them, but we could only choose one, and that was the one we settled on, and it was approved. Um, the Harnett County, uh, Department of Social Services, uh, did receive an award, um, at their last statewide meeting for their Emergency Foster Home Program. Uh, it's been recognized as a great opportunity, having three emergency foster homes in the event that they have, uh, a child that needs a place to stay based on the situation they're in at their current location. Um, I need approval on a few items here. I need motion to approve budget amendments as requested by the finance officer.
Motion to approve.
Motion had been made properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, Madam Clerk.
I also need a motion to approve tax rebates, releases, and refunds as requested by the tax administrator.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve is, is properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, Madam Clerk.
And I need a motion to authorize the chairman to sign contract amendments exceeding the county manager's signature threshold.
Motion to approve. I'm sorry.
You go ahead.
Motion to approve.
I second it.
All right. Motion, motion is properly seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Ayes have it. Item number 11, is there any new business to come for this body?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, based on the information that we were just given by, and I'm going to pass it to y'all, I wanted to be able to pass it to you after I said what I did about it. The second paragraph alleges it was a pretty serious crime that we probably need to turn this over to the sheriff's office and let him investigate it.
How did they bring it to the board, Mike? And I don't understand why you brought that to them.
After Ms. Matthews reads that, I think it's, it's to the board, did you correct that to the high sheriff and ask to investigate? All right. Is there any other new business to come for this body?
Motion to adjourn.
Wait a minute. Don't want.
Did I?
Mr. Counselor, is there a need for a closed session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
I'm usually the one that reads that.
Okay. Uh, since Mr. Jagger's already motioned, at the sound of the gavel, we will be adjourned.